September 11th, 2018 school board meeting to order. And whether you are in attendance here tonight or watching from another location, my colleagues and I are pleased that you took the time to join us. We certainly do appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and you, our community. And while the board and the Brevard School staff members are fully committed to doing our very best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us to continually improve. Thank you for being the active participants in this process that you are. Pam, roll call, please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Present.
Mrs. Deskovich?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Mr. Ziegler?
Present.
In honor of those who lost their lives as a result of the terrorist attacks against the United States on September 11th, 2001, and as respect to the first responders who bravely supported rescue and recovery efforts, and the military who continue to stand guard against our enemies throughout the world, we are joined tonight by the Cocoa High School Army JRTC Color Guard to assist us in recognizing Patriot Day. After the presentation of colors, Battalion Executive Officer Jacob Sickles will lead us in the pledge, followed by a moment of silence. Please rise.
Colors. 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 Both.
Right fist. Forward. March. Color guard. Hold. Left fist. Present. Arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Arms. Colors. Both. Ready. Cut. Present. Arms. Order. Arms.
Thank you, please be seated. I want to give a very special welcome and thank you to Sergeant First Class Retired Freddie Marino, Seth Cawthon, Battalion Commander, Sarah Two, the Battalion Staff, Matthew LaRacus, Company Commander, and Meili Nabarijo, Company Commander, representing the finest of our youth today and the future of our leadership in this country tomorrow. Again, the Cocoa High Junior ROTC, please give them a round of applause.
Right fist. Forward. March.
As they're leaving, just a couple of quick comments. Everybody remembers where they were today, or at least almost everybody remembers where they were today 17 years ago. And, you know, I think all of us always have that thing in our mind and that statement that, that we will never forget. And I think it's critical as us in the education field and as leaders of this district to remind ourselves of something that I just heard today for the first time and it really set in was that 25% of our population today was born after September 11th of 2001. 25% that never understood or never saw what happened on that day, or were too young to know what happened on that day. And so I look at it as our duty to continue to ensure to teach, to re-honor, so that they, those individuals can understand, comprehend, and carry our history forward. And we have incredible teachers that do that every day. And we need to remember those who still stand, or our teachers that have now become our first-line protectors of our children. They are the ones that need our support all the time. And so I appreciate all of the educators that are here tonight that are watching, but certainly as we have moved into a new realm of what it means to be a student and what it means to be in education, today is a great day to remind ourselves of the legacy of what happened on September 11th and our duty to make sure that we do never forget it and that our, our children and their children understand what it means for us to remember this day. So thank you for letting me take that time. At this time, I'd like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community. Mr. Ziegler, we'll start with you.
Thank you. I just want to give a quick shout out to Discovery Elementary. Principal Carrie Castillo invited me to Patriot's Day today. There weren't very many in Brevard Public Schools today, so it was nice to be able to go to an event where the children were honoring our heroes, our first responders. They were all recognized individually this morning, and of course, a lot of great patriotic songs. And on my way there, I was very dismayed myself. I realized I had forgot my flag pin. I did have my patriotic tie on, but I forgot my flag pin. And then the first thing I know is they gave me one of these fancy pins that flash. And I know exactly what you were all thinking. Where do you get a pin like that? Because I love you guys and I think about you guys all the time, I suggested we bring you all a pin.
Is this below the $25 gift? Well, they didn't ask what these pins cost. But I thought they were really cool pins, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Ziegler, and thank you for the flashing pin. Ms. Belford?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Craig. One, wanted to extend a message of appreciation to Mayor Walt Johnson of Titusville as well as Scott Larice, the City Manager in Titusville. Dr. Mullins and I had the opportunity to meet with them and kind of give them an update on some of the things going on in District One schools. Talked a little bit about current technical education, the offerings up there, as well as progress being made in some of our schools as far as student achievement. So certainly want to thank them for reaching out and providing that opportunity for discussion. Also want to give a shout out to Astronaut High School. Some of you may have seen, they just opened a student market. And in that market, they have food, they have clothing, they have personal hygiene items. Students can go in and get whatever they need completely free of charge. And my understanding is that this is something that came from students kind of understanding the struggles that their, their peers are facing, and so kudos to them for that. A huge thank you to Titusville High School, who is also taking that message of the importance of community and all working together. The THS students went out last week and welcomed students at our elementary schools in their feeder chain and gave them kind of a pep talk, this is what you have to look forward to in life, and so certainly appreciate them reaching out. And then I'm going to do two shameless plugs, if you don't mind, Mr. Craig, for events that are coming up. If you all are familiar with Hummingbird Pantry, they actually are utilizing space at our Riverview facility. And they are a food pantry. They also have clothing and personal hygiene items and that sort of thing, but they've been a great partner with our schools in the North Area and do amazing things for the community. Not only do they serve the students in our schools with food, but they also serve families who can come in and pick up needed items. So they are doing a fundraiser on the 22nd. It's Barbecue and Burger Bash, so I thought perhaps some of you would enjoy that. It'll be the 22nd from 5:30 to 8:00 at Sandpoint. And at a week moment, they asked me if I would be a judge for the barbecue and burger bash, and so I have committed to do so, just because I think Hummingbird is so incredible. But I am, I'm looking forward to supporting them, not so much looking forward to judging, but I am happy to be there to support because they do so many great things. And then the last thing is Astronaut High School is currently doing a collection for dresses, shoes, jewelry, makeup, to assist some of their peers with being able to attend homecoming. So if anyone has any items, you can get them to me and I'll get them to the school or certainly run by and drop them off yourselves, and that's all I have.
Fantastic, thank you very much, Ms. Belford. Ms. Deskovich?
I have two recognitions. First, I would like to congratulate Sarah Almond in our Government and Community Relations Department. I, this didn't come through our system, I got an email as an invitation from the Florida Public Relations Association, the Space Coast Chapter. They're giving out awards, I think next week at the King Center, and they were highlighting and showcasing her as getting the Rising Star Award, and it jumped right out at me, and she is just a kind, wonderful, good woman, and I'm super proud of her and excited that she's part of our team, and I'm sure Mr. Reed enjoys having her in his department. And the second one is I just want to give a shout out to Mr. or Dr. Joseph Finley tonight, who is here. He is on our agenda, under the consent agenda, to approve him as a new addition to the ICOC. And he is a dedicated member of our community, 30 years FBI. I think he's, he's going to be a good addition to that committee if we vote in favor. So thank you, Sarah, for being here.
Mr. Susan?
So I wanted to say thank you to the Rockledge Creel and Longleaf Faculty for having me in to speak. Spent the day at all three schools where I met with some of the custodians and teachers and moved around the school and just great, great things going on inside of our schools. I also wanted to give a shout out to Rockledge Football for beating Bowls last weekend. Many of you don't know, but this is two top 10 teams in the state of Florida and projects us to be in the top five for the state of Florida, and Rockledge has got a heck of a team moving forward. They're undefeated and look for them to do some great things. Mr. Kramer's in the back, I wanted to say thank you for coming. He and I and a couple of parents were at Manatee Elementary a couple last week, no, two weekends ago, and there were some issues with the bushes being overrun, the county it was theirs, so we just decided to take the initiative and clean them up, pull them off, weed them out, and trim them and get it all taken care of, and he was one of the people and he came out today, so I wanted to recognize him. Dana Wilkins and Gillian Bailey and Ms. Spellman and others had met over the Vieira growth that we have recently, some of the things that are going on, and I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Su Han, or Han, who met with us. Sorry, I'm going to do it for at least another year before I get it taken care of. But they met and she sat down and with Mr. Lindeman and everybody else plotted out everything so that the parents and the community could engage in the process of how we're going to come about a plan for growth in Vieira. And I just wanted to say thank you to Sue, thank you to you guys for coming out, I really appreciate that. We met with Innovation Day for the next Innovation Games that are coming up. That's going to be Harris and Northrop Grumman and the rest of them, it's going to be at Eastern Florida State hopefully, but it is massive, drones, robots, robotics, everything that you can think of with STEM in one place in one day for elementary, middle, and high school, going to be phenomenal, and that's going to be most likely May or March 8th, if you guys are looking at a date. I did get to go by Longleaf, I wanted to say Dr. Bias, give a shout out to her. Many of you don't know, but there has been some really odd occurrences at Longleaf over the last 18 months, to say the least. Everybody's back there. First off, we had an issue where it was overrun with rats, right? Which has never been heard of. Then you had a huge flood that was there, and most recently, the chicken pox have hit, right? So there's just all of these odd occurrences that occurred, I probably missed like three or four other ones, right? Anyways, I just want to say thank you for holding that thing, that place down and doing such an amazing job, because when I was there with the faculty, they, it was, they was, they were happy to be there, they were moving, and everybody I talked to was very positive. So thank you so much for everything you're doing, even though all these crazy things keep happening to your school. I did want to say thank you to Bayside for having us over for the CNC Machining Day that we were at. Phenomenal program, exactly what our district needs, as far as not many of you know, but Bayside put in a manufacturing center which has CNC manufacturing and welding in it, and they kicked it off and did an open house for us this year. They have kids that are graduating and going into the manufacturing industry right out of school. It's exactly what we've been trying to do with the trades. And, you know, I wanted to say thanks to Knights Armament for having us, that was an amazing facility over there. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Dr. Mullins?
Sorry to take any of your stuff. Thank you, Mr. Craig. That's all right, Mr. Susan, I'll just scratch a couple of those off my list. First, I want to share that I had the opportunity to spend time with our, our PIE kickoff event. PIE stands for Partners in Education. There were probably close to 100 school representatives together collaborating, working through, talking about best practices of how they increase business partnership, collaboration within their school, within their community, and then adjacent at the Melbourne Civic Center, there had to have been close to 100 business partners there, providing their services and opportunities available to come together with our schools. Overall, representing over 500 business partners across Brevard Public Schools, contributing over a million dollars annually, both in contributions as well as in-kind support to our schools, just a fantastic event and just a true testament of our community. Had a wonderful day visiting schools, I think it was with Ms. Deskovich a week or two ago. Started out wonderfully at Gemini Elementary School and had a great visit in some classrooms, met some absolutely fantastic kids in the hallway and in the cafeteria and in the classroom. I got to tell you, the level of engagement of kids in our lowest grades, learning, writing about the books they're learning, doing text comparisons at first grade was just so impressive. Teachers were doing a phenomenal job. We then left Gemini and went to Satellite High School, and it began with an equally wonderful visit, visiting with teachers and, and hearing about the great work they were doing, and, but it, it, the visit took a very unfortunate turn of an event, and we had a situation where a student was experiencing a medical condition, and fortunately, she is doing well. But I want to do a shout out to our teacher who was there and responded to our students' need, and the other students. Such a demonstration of leadership and courage among our students. It was just, it was a very, very tense moment, but I got to tell you, our, our kids and our, particularly this teacher responded was absolutely amazing. We attended a Making Strides kickoff event, if you're not familiar with American Cancer Society. I have been nominated or accepted as a candidate, I guess, as a Real Men Wear Pink Campaign participant. This is actually a, an effort that is very, very dear to my heart. Approximately 40 years ago, I was really, all right, I was in middle school. My mother, when I came home from school and my parents sat down with us as a family and received the news that my mother had breast cancer. And you can imagine, it's a, it's a challenging circumstance today for everyone, but 40 years ago, as a, as a middle schooler, the, the uncertainty of the future was, was pretty devastating. And I'm fortunate today that my mother is a cancer survivor. She's still with, with us today, and I'm very, very blessed. Thank you. But the reality is, not every story like this has that same kind of ending, and we have our kids and our families that are experiencing it every day. So I would encourage you, if you're not part of my Facebook, please join Facebook and you'll be hearing more about the Real Men Wear Pink Campaign. I have been told that I have fashion design students across our amazing fashion design programs in our district who are right now designing and creating pink ties for me to wear every day in the month of October. And I will post my pink tie of the day on the website. We haven't quite figured it out, but we're hoping I can then auction them off and all the proceeds will go to the campaign. So stay tuned, there'll be more information coming, but just in, just again, an exciting demonstration of our kids being a part of an amazing cause, so. I want to share, I had the privilege of starting my day today at Eastern, Palm Bay Campus, Eastern Florida State College, for a 9/11 memorial service. And it was hosted by Associate Provost Michael Kador, who I know you're all familiar with, just a great leader in our community, but the guest speaker was our Mayor of Palm Bay, Mayor William Capote, who was very close physically, as an individual, to the World Trade Centers when the terrorist attack occurred. And he shared his story and challenged probably close to 100 students in the room from Eastern Florida. Mr. Kador took a survey and probably 80% of the students in that room were former Brevard Public School alum, and they were challenged from Mayor Capote with a message of courage. And making a positive impact and difference in their world today and not, and, and understanding how their world today, although some of them were just wee little ones when this happened 17 years ago, but how their impact in the world today can make a positive difference for tomorrow and the future. And it was just a sobering moment, but also just very encouraging to see our students engaged. And finally, I wanted to acknowledge the board, you are probably aware that actually a board agenda item was pulled from tonight's agenda. It was the 2018-19 Critical Teacher Shortage List for teachers in certain certification areas. After working with staff and looking at the needs of the district, we'll be bringing a recommendation at the next board meeting to actually expand the Critical Teacher Shortage List for both 18-19 as well as 17-18 to include teachers in the areas of certification of English and ESOL. If you're watching the news at all, you see that we do have a need for teachers across not just Brevard, but across the state and across the country, and this is the, the first of renewed recruitment and retention efforts to continue to attract and retain the best and the brightest, the highest quality workforce in our district. So I'm excited, shared that news with Mr. Calucci earlier this afternoon, and of course, very well received, and so that recommendation will be coming to you at the next board meeting. So, thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much, Dr. Mullins. And that brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Mr. Craig and members of the board, on this evening's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one recognition, one presentation, 20 consent items, 10 action items, and three information items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. Item A7 on administrative staff recommendations has been revised. An attachment was added to item D9. Item F15 on uniform statewide assessment calendar is an addition. Items F22 on Merritt Island High School Sykes Creek Drainage Project closeout. G31 on legacy charter school agreement. G32 on purchasing solicitations, and G33 on department-school initiated agreements have, have received revisions. An item on Critical Teacher Shortage subject areas 2018-19 has been deleted. Capacity growth has been added as board discussion point.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Belford, seconded by Ms. Deskovich. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
Mr. Craig, there are three persons on this agenda item for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Belford, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
At this time, if you would, please join me in congratulating Ms. Christine Moore on her reclassification and transfer from the, from the Director of Professional Learning and Development position to Assistant Superintendent of Student Services.
I will tell you, I started with Heather saying to me, "Stand up, you need to stand up now." I thought I was being really smart in planning my trainings on Tuesday nights so that I wouldn't have to let people in the front door at night, so I'm training right now. But I did want to come over and thank you guys, thank you for your trust in me in this position. I've worked, I've worked with a lot of faculties, and they have taught me how to be a better listener, a better thinker, have more empathy, and so I did want to make sure to thank all of the people, all of the faculties I've worked with. But in the leadership role, I've had three leaders that have really made me humble, taught me humility, taught me how to be humble, taught me how to be a servant leader, taught me how to be reflective, and taught me for, how to fight for what I believe in, and it's Tom Sawyer, Mark Mullins, and Carol Tolks. So I thank all three of you. Lastly, the same people have come to me every time I've been here before you guys for any reason. Heather Price has my back all the time, so I wanted to make sure to shout out her, shout her out, give her a shout out. My mom has been, watches you guys on TV all the time, so if you're ever wondering, she's watching you people on TV all the time. And my dad passed away last year, but he came to all of them, and then you guys had the Army ROT, JROC here. And my dad was a career Army vet, and if you believe in signs, and I do, he was here. But new to my family is Anano. So Anano is visiting us from the country of Georgia, and I said, "You need to see government and process," and so she's here with us tonight, too. So I thank you guys, I thanked Beth Eddy already, because I'm going to be bugging her a lot, and I hope to, I hope to make you guys proud. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations. That moves us into our recognitions. Dr. Mullins?
Yes, Mr. Craig and members of the board, tonight we recognize the Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year for Brevard Public Schools. Dr. Carol Tolks, Deputy Superintendent and Chief Human Resources Officer, will facilitate the presentation. Dr. Tolks?
Good evening, and thank you. It is an honor to announce the Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year for Brevard Public Schools. The Principal Achievement Award for Outstanding Leadership and the Outstanding Assistant Principal Achievement Award were established in 1988. Principal Achievement Award were established in nineteen eighty-eight to recognize exemplary principals and assistant principals for their contributions to their schools and their communities. The program honors principals and assistant principals that have spearheaded initiatives to increase student performance, promote safe learning environments, and establish partnerships with parents and community members. This year's nominees were nominated by their peers and selected through a process involving district leadership. At this time, I would like to ask Ina Leiba, Leiba? Leiba? Principal of Sea Park Elementary School and Catherine Murphy, previous Assistant Principal at Longleaf Elementary School, along with School Board Chairperson John Craig, Superintendent Dr. Mark Mullins, Jean Bartelson, Principal of Enterprise Elementary School, and President of Brevard Association of School Administrators Gary Shifrin, Executive Director of Brevard Association of School Administrators, and our business partners from Community Credit Union Meredith Gibson and Brandi Evans to join us in recognizing these outstanding administrators tonight. So if you will please come forward. Also, I would like to invite Mr. Shifrin to the podium if you have a few words.
Thank you very much. Dr. Mullins, Mr. Craig, school board members. On behalf of the Brevard Association of School Administrators and the Community Credit Union, I want to thank the superintendent and the school board for taking the time to recognize two very important ladies who hold two very important roles in our school system. Although we all agree that the teacher is the most important person for the success of our students, it needs to be said that out, without the support of a great principal and assistant principal, our teachers would struggle as they perform their jobs. Our administrators provide the necessary resources, the motivation, the research, the encouragement, and so many other aspects of school life that allows our teachers to bring out the best in our students for their success. Our administrators put in so many hours as they leave home to go to work in the dark and in many instances arrive back home well beyond sundown. And most of them do not know what a Monday to Friday job is as they are attending the many sporting events, community meetings, fundraisers, Odyssey of the Mind competition, robotics, future problem solving, dinner fundraisers, a drama or band performance, and that's only a few of the many things that administrators do on the weekends. I would add that the accountability issue has become so important over the past years that administrators are held responsible for literally everything that happens in their school. We ask so much of our administrators and in Brevard County, I can tell you that your administrators do an awesome job. Without their expertise and total commitment, we would not be as successful as we have been over the years where we are indeed one of the best districts in the state. Ina and Catherine, we congratulate you both. And tonight, besides our words of praise, we also have a very nice check for your personal use. We are so proud of both of you and please know you represent the very best administrators you will find. This recognize, recognition puts you in an elite group of all the former principals and assistant principals of the year. As a former superintendent once told me, "This is a recognition that can never be taken away from you." Indeed, congratulations are in order and you have much to be proud of.
I also have some more words to say as she's up here. Ms. Leiba, she's been an educator for thirty-two years, educating in Brevard Public Schools for twenty-five of those years. She's beginning her thirteenth year as a school principal at Sea Park Elementary School, serving the community of Satellite Beach. Before assuming this role, she served as Assistant Principal at Sea Park Elementary for six years. Prior to that, she was a Title One teacher at Endeavor Elementary School. Before coming to Brevard, she was a teacher in Orange and Palm Beach County and in Tennessee. In nineteen eighty, she received her bachelor's degree in elementary education from Florida Atlantic University. She later obtained her degree in educational leadership from Nova Southeastern University in nineteen ninety-nine. Ms. Leiba defines quality leadership in her day-to-day interactions with students, staff, and her community. She exemplifies a commitment to continuous improvement and fosters a culture of safety and high expectations. This past year, she was a key spokesperson in our inaugural LEED conference where we are training our new generation of leaders. Most notable is Ms. Leiba's role as the instructional leader of Sea Park Elementary School. Her knowledge of curriculum and design and instruction brought her school grade from a C to an A, proving that with the right leader at the helm, anything is possible for our children. Ultimately, she is a positive and inspiring role model of exemplary leadership and performance for all our aspiring and veteran leaders alike. Congratulations to Ms. Leiba, Brevard Public Schools, two thousand nineteen Principal of the Year. Award is Catherine Murphy. Catherine has been an educator with Brevard Public Schools for thirteen years, serving in the capacity of fourth and fifth grade teacher, Title One teacher, and the Assistant Principal at Longleaf Elementary School since two thousand fifteen. Most recently, Ms. Murphy was promoted to Principal at Ferraglin Elementary School. Ms. Murphy earned her bachelor's degree in elementary education from the University of Central Florida in two thousand five and master's degree in educational leadership from Nova Southeastern University in two thousand twelve. According to Ms. Murphy's former supervising principal, Dr. Bias, Ms. Murphy excels at school leadership and maintains her positive attitude and rational demeanor as she deals with discipline, oversees school-wide events, organizes schedules and testing, meets with parents, and copes with a plethora of other daily issues that demand her expertise and attention. Ms. Murphy is a high-performing instructional leader who leads by example, puts students first, and strives for excellence in all that she does. Congratulations, Ms. Murphy, Brevard Public Schools, two thousand nineteen Assistant Principal of the Year.
Speech? No? And congratulations to both of you and all your families, as I know as they are part of that support team. And to Community Credit Union and Meredith and your whole team, thank you for your partnership. Thank you for allowing, or participating and supporting our educational professionals so well. We couldn't do it without you, so thank you. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about the presentation this evening?
Mr. Craig and board, Ms. Penny Zirker, Chief Financial Officer, will provide us with an audit update. Ms. Zirker?
As the board is aware, at the beginning of the school year, we began doing audit updates quarterly as audit reports came out. As of the last of this quarter, the only audit that we have had has actually been not necessarily a full audit, but a cross-point terms enterprise system gases, gap assessment performed by RSM, our internal auditor, at the request of our audit committee, the superintendent and district staff. The goals of the assessment was to evaluate the current system and determine gaps related to, one, functionality, two, usability, three, sustainability, and finally, risk. It was really key to identify associated risks with the current system as well as define total cost of ownership for the system. The discovery portion of RSM's application was determining the complexity of the current system. There's a large number of workarounds, majority of them are manual, and many third-party applications. With the many workarounds and third-party applications, it increases the likelihood of critical errors and failures. It requires a specialized skill set not commonly found in the market today. Users lack adequate training. The system is not intuitive and it requires many manual processes. It's still what was referred to as a green screen system, something that most of our more recent graduate, high school graduates probably aren't familiar with. It also has inadequate documentation on the operations. The one positive is the annual total cost is about two million dollars, which is actually low for a system, an enterprise resource system. The key takeaways that RSM took from their study is that at best, the program is adequate. The complexity of the current architecture and the lack of document, documentation will make transition difficult into a new system. There, they say we need to seek a more modern solution to replace the current platform and that includes both systems that were reviewed, the finance and the student information system. They said replacement will require an external assistance and we should be prepared that the total cost of ownership will be greater than the new system driven by our very low to zero cost of maintenance for the system at the moment. RSM did make recommendations. Their short term was to establish communication protocols between ET and the users, document current, current state to help transition run smoother, and maintain and build communications with other districts who have already made the transition from a cross-point terms system to a newer system. Midterm recommendations, perform more frequent and in-depth trainings, improve the report-writing capabilities of the current system, implement more budget controls, and initiate a formal software selection process. Long-term goals include initial migration through the finance system first and consider adoption of out-of-the-box functionality, not writing customized programs. Emphasize the need for user self-service and automation capabilities. Any additional information needed from the report can contact my office and a report, copy of the audit report will be provided. If I can answer any questions, that's our presentation on the latest audit update.
I do have a question. The total cost of ownership, annual cost, does that include the maintenance, annual maintenance fee?
It does include annual maintenance, but under our current agreement, we're, the maintenance is extremely low to nil. It also includes our cost of people and programmers that are working on the system as well.
Our, our annual maintenance is technically prepaid, but so that's not calculated in here?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions?
Just, just a quick one because of that question Mr. Siegler had. So that two point one million is people currently, were employees that we have currently working on the system. So if we had a new automated system?
The automation system would impact the users, which are not included in that number. The two million dollar number reflects ET staff as well as other costs to maintain the system.
So they could do something else?
The automation would come, would impact end users. Finance would be a department who would benefit from automation where right now everything is done manually and by hand, so it is possible that through automation and an updated system, we could repurpose people to do other things.
Thank you.
Ms. Zirker, do you, just from your personal experience, do you, do you find, or did you find that the, the items that were brought through the actual audit update, and I appreciate your presentation, give you a, and the ET staff, a, a firm look forward on, on, on exactly what, you know, what, what's missing and what, you know, what, what is required, what's a nice to have, you know, kind of breaking those things out so that if and when you went to a RFP or some sort of sourcing strategy, that you'd have documentation out of this audit that actually gives us something to work from that, that shows what we need?
It is a good first start, beginning to it. Both Mr. Cheatham and I have work to do with our staffs through the documentation that was referenced to complete that. I think both teams were slightly surprised to find all the things that are missing, all the gaps in functionality and how much manual work is going into keeping our records, but it's definitely a good first start that we're both excited about and beginning to move towards the next phase.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, then we will move on and we are now at public comments. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a digital clock in front of me that'll count down and help you keep track of your time and when your time is over, I will be asking you to stop to allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times. Your statement should be directed to the board chair and the chair may interrupt to warn or terminate a participant's statement when time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chairman may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present, who are watching from home. We'll begin, we have five speakers tonight. We'll begin with the first three and I'll call you up after that. Before speaking, please state your name, the organization you represent, if, if any, and identify the topic you'll be talking on. First is Dana Wilkins, followed by Vanessa Skipper and Anthony Calucci.
Is it ready, like showtime, I feel like? Okay, my name is Dana Wilkins and I am with Quest Elementary and part of the PTO. I am the current PTO president at Quest Elementary and I am here to talk to you regarding the overcapacity at Quest. Viera is experiencing explosive amount of growth that has predicted years ago and is now coming to a realization. Quest currently has close to eleven hundred children attending the school. We weren't made for that. Merging the national economy, Brevard County is attracting top talent to the area for companies such as SpaceX, Blue Origin, Northrop Grumman, and Harris. With this talent, these talented professionals are starting new families and growing their families in this area. To a large extent, many families are choosing to set roots in central West Viera in order to meet the needs of the rapidly growing population. The underlying infrastructure must immediately grow to meet the demands. Currently at Quest, students are eating lunch starting at ten fifteen in the morning. There is not enough time in the day for children to enjoy recess. There is not enough equipment for all the children to go out and play together with all their friends. The need for a new elementary school is past due. In two thousand fifteen, a Florida Today article, Dane Theodore was quoted as saying that capacity issues lead to a need for more dedicated computer, computer lab space in order to accommodate standardized student testing. That is not possible at Quest. We are looking at possibly taking away computer labs to make them into classrooms because we don't not, do not have enough room for children. Brevard County's Florida's growth and development outlook, especially in areas like Viera, not only results in a positive outlook for the county's construction sector, but also for the county's housing market. Viera Company is developing Transona in approximately a dozen neighborhoods south of Wickham Road and west of I ninety-five. Some are already in development. And where are they zoned for? And where are they zoned for? Quest Elementary. The thought even if another charter school opens, Quest parents will go there. Parents are not going to choose to go to a charter school if we have the option to have another public school. Overpopulation in schools have been shown to have an adverse effect on student learning in a number of ways. Overcrowding affects the classroom activities as well as instructional planning. Teachers typically have less planning time and fewer resources in overpopulated schools. Teachers in overpopulated schools also experience higher rates of burnout, higher absentee rates, and higher levels of stress. We have a full grade out in portables. We shouldn't have to add more portables and the cost of portables. Schools are not just buildings, but environments for learning. If the environment is not conducive to learning due to overcrowding, student achievement and teacher planning are negatively affected. The time is now, time to make a decision to build another school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins. Vanessa Skipper, Anthony Calucci, and Arthur Christensen.
Good evening. Vanessa Skipper, Vice President of the Brevard Federation of Teachers, and I'm here to speak on teacher salary. Before I get started, I just wanted to say that sometimes I know that Anthony and I get up here and we fight for teachers, but I want to let you guys know, you might not be aware of, that both Anthony Calucci and myself were finalists for Teacher of the Year. So we are among the best of the best. We are, we're put in those positions by our peers and administrators and a group of people who felt we were deserving of the honor. So when we're up here advocating, we're up here advocating for our profession because we believe in what we do, and we believe in our classrooms, and we believe in our students, and we believe in public education. I started my day today with a teacher at 7:15 in Melbourne, and the reason she had to meet that early with me was because after school she had to tutor, and then she had to go to her job at the mall. It's no secret that our county lags in teacher salary. It's no secret that if you have a problem, you should come with a solution, and I think that we have worked very hard to try to come up with solutions to solve the teacher pay problem in our county. My dad always told me that the answer was always no if you didn't ask. I'm sure sometimes he regretted telling me that. But I can tell you that I will always ask for what I know is best for our county and our teachers. And I want to thank Ms. Belford for her vote for the millage. On, during the primary day, there were many counties who went out for millage or half-cent renewal. Bay, half-cent renewed, Broward, half-cent, or half-mill increase, Calhoun, half-cent renewed, Clay, one-mill increase, Lake, .75-mill increase. They also have a 1% sales tax that goes to school in Lake County. Marion County was the first county to get both a sales tax and an extra mill increase, and they just got their mill renewed. Martin County, half-mill increase. Orange County, one-mill increase. They already have a half-cent tax that goes to school as well. Other counties, Alachua, one-mill. Franklin, half-mill. Gulf, one-mill. Hamilton, 2.5. Hardy, one. Indian River, .6. Marion, one. Monroe, half. Orange, one. Palm Beach, 2.5. Pinellas, half. Sarasota, one. Seminole, .7. Taylor, .25. Waculla, .5. Walton, .5. And there are many other counties that are going out for mill in November. The time is now. The voters should have gotten the chance to decide. The answer is always, 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 always no if you don't ask. Thank you.
Anthony Calucci, Arthur Christensen, and Braxton Paget.
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. First off, I was very pleased to learn of your decision to revisit the critical shortage list at your next meeting. I certainly think that is a step in the right direction when it comes to teacher morale. As of today, there are 79 instructional openings in Brevard County schools. I want to point out that that number would have been even larger if we didn't fight for and you didn't agree to our annual contract reappointment provisions. Make no mistake about it, items we bring to negotiations do make this a better school district. Secondly, what these 79 vacancies mean is that every day that goes by, BPS is saving roughly $20,000. At this point, nearly $500,000 has been saved in this unfortunate manner. It is imperative that this board does not allow this money to fall to the bottom line. The money must be earmarked for teacher and staff compensation. As we proceed with negotiations, please direct your staff to track that money weekly. This is yet another suggestion we are making to help with this compensation issue. Your teachers are the second-most experienced workforce in the state and $1,150 behind the average teacher pay in the state. That's a fact. That's from the DOE. It's a glaring issue that must be addressed. Our teachers deserve the same sort of raises that teachers in Orange County received the last three years. This year, those teachers received a $2,075 raise and a $500 bonus. They received $250 more than us last year and 1,268 more the year before. I hope you understand that's why I brought a proposal for a raise of $3,593 to the table. It's not a random number, but rather the exact amount we've fallen behind. I believe that our teachers work hard enough and get the results to earn the compensation that is comparable with other districts. As a resident of Titusville, I know it could be at schools in Orange County in less time than it takes to get to my office in Rockledge. We have many teachers that live close to Orange, Volusia, Osceola, and Indian River Counties. This board needs to understand that you are in a competition with those districts for teachers. With a very real teacher shortage in Florida, losing that competition means that our students are either being taught by uncertified teachers or in overcrowded classrooms. It's a competition we can't afford to lose. With that, I go back to what I noted earlier. Items we bring to negotiation make this school district better. Compensation is the most important thing we've brought this year. Thank you.
Arthur Christensen and Braxton Paget.
My name is Arthur Christensen. I live at 2250 Windsor Drive, Merritt Island, District 2, next to Stevenson School. What I'm going to tell you is the same thing I've written letters about, and I told you a year ago. That school is kind of unique. It still burns exterior lights outside in the sunshine. That's my tax dollars they're playing with. In the evening, they bully us by using the same lights shining on our backyards and our property. About two years ago, I wrote a letter to school superintendent Blackburn. Shortly thereafter, I received a telephone call from Mr. Mark Mullins, who reluctantly agreed to walk through to see the problems firsthand. He never came. That's the reason we still have the problem today, and I'm standing right here, repeating the same thing over. After last corridor busing ended, the residents were told no more buses on Gerard and Windsor Drive. Due to the danger to little children, I hear that schools are supposed to take care of the children. And little old ladies are forced off the road when school buses come and chase them off. There are two pictures in here, and they'll show the abuse and violation of federal and state law. The school bus in picture number one was parked, blocking the street. There were two other cars from Stevenson School. It was also keeping my wife imprisoned in her own home. She needed to go to a different school to pick up a child, but she couldn't go because the driveway was blocked. It also shows where mail, this was done during mail and delivery time. And the postal office told me there's a $2,000 fine, five-year imprisonment for both for interfering or obstruction of mail delivery. Picture two shows how the Florida law has violated and destroyed its property in our community. Why am I mad? You have five to 10 acres of land behind the school and a road that goes to Banana River Drive. Why aren't you not using instead of bullying us in the neighborhood? My wife's 83 years old, and she has to put up with this, and I'm 85. I should have a nicer time instead of the bullying. If you...
Braxton Paget again on behalf of Legacy Academy. I want to thank members of the board for again considering or reconsidering the fate of Legacy Academy. Today, you have before you an amendment to Legacy Academy's charter contract. This is the culmination of the settlement negotiations that we've been engaged with Ms. Invall here over the last couple of weeks. We decided that this was the most effective way to accomplish the needs and address the concerns that were expressed by the members of the board at the last meeting. We believe that this is fair agreement. It addresses each of the concerns that you guys raised. It allows, it preserves the issues that were in the 90-day notice, on which I know is something that you guys had raised concerns about. It also allows for a slightly expedited proceeding should we wind up here on the exact same issues next time. We believe that this protects the interests of the school district in that respect, and also allows Legacy Academy to have the second chance that they've so badly been looking for here. Tonight, we ask that you approve the charter amendment. This is going to, assuming that you do vote on this, this will go before Legacy's own board at a special meeting that they've scheduled for tomorrow night, where we expect that they will most likely agree, approve the amendment as well. I will leave the specifics to Ms. Invall if you have any questions, but certainly I'm here as well if you'd like to consult with me about anything. Thank you.
The board wishes to thank this evening's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is greatly appreciated. And that moves us in to the consent agenda. Dr. Mullins?
There are 20 agenda items under this category.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Does any board member wish to pull any item or items? We're having some technical difficulty. Log out, log back in. Oh, yeah. While Ms. Belford is doing that, does anybody have anything they'd like to pull?
I can't see it to tell you.
Mr. Ziegler, did you have anything?
No, I'm trying to get back in also.
I couldn't see your screen.
My item is on action.
Your item is on action. Okay.
That's what I needed to know, thank you. Sorry, I couldn't see it.
Just waiting on Mr. Ziegler. I think you had something that you wanted to pull.
No, mine's not on consent. Mine's on action.
Okay. Thank you. Then I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items as published with no items pulled for discussion. Move to approve?
Second.
Approved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Deskovich. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. I gotta do the same thing. Dr. Mullins?
Yes, Mr. Craig, there are 10 items under this category. The first item is G-31 on legacy charter school agreement.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve? Second.
Moved by Ms. Belford, seconded by Ms. Deskovich. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to, as I understood from the speaker, their board has not yet approved this yet. So as I understand it, if we approve this right now, and they don't approve it, I guess, tomorrow night, then there is no agreement. Is that correct, Ms. Invall?
That's correct.
And therefore, then, if they don't approve it tomorrow night, the next step would be moving to the ALJ hearing in December.
Unless the board has directed otherwise.
Unless we decide to revisit it again. So I just wanted to make that clear. But the ball will actually be in the schools' court once we pass this.
Any other comments? Ms. Invall, my question, I'm sorry, Ms. Belford, you pulled it. No, you didn't pull it, sorry. Ms. Invall, my question would be, what is your legal recommendation regarding the priority or precedence of who should be approving what first? Since the language was passed back and forth between attorneys, I would assume that we would get some sort of formal recognition of the intent or the ability to meet all of the circumstances and the things that we put forward that are both in writing and not in writing. If we approve this as is, it doesn't give us any ability to really enforce that, does it? They could go and change it, or they could, but I guess I'm wondering why the precedence is happening this way. I would have thought it would have happened the other way.
Well, you're both, you're both governing boards that are subject to sunshine law, so you both have to do that in the sunshine. So it kind of depends on when the meetings are, and yours happened to fall first. They did have a meeting on Saturday, but I don't believe they, I don't believe that was on the agenda. I think they looked at it, but I don't think it was on the agenda for approve. I don't believe they took a vote on Saturday. So they have a meeting again tomorrow.
Okay. And is your, obviously, there's, you know, I know you passed back and forth a lot of language in there, and I do appreciate all of the work that you and your team have put into it. I'm not even sure what number of hours we're at at this point, but I do appreciate what you and Anita have continued to do to assist this process. My question then would be, some of the things that were pulled out of the language, have they been completed, or are you not knowledgeable about that?
Some of the things that we took out specifically from the first couple drafts, I do not know.
Correct, that were also agreed, that were then verbally exchanged with legal counsel, to my understanding, correct?
Yes.
Okay. But we do not know if any of those things have happened.
We do not know.
Okay. Ms. Belford?
Looking at the recommendation from the superintendent, it is, one, approval of the first amended charter contract with Legacy Academy Charter, Inc., and, two, upon the execution of that amended charter contract by Legacy Academy, the submission of the withdrawal of the 90-day termination notice. If it would please the board, we could offer a motion to amend that to, upon the execution of the first amended charter contract, and verification that all verbal agreements have been completed.
That would be about the only way I think I, well, I'm sorry, is that a motion that you made?
I will be happy to make that motion if you, that's fine.
Well, in discussion, I would say that that would be about the only way I could support it, because otherwise, we don't have any ability of knowing whether or not anything's going to happen.
Okay, so I will, I will make an amended motion to, one, approve the first amended charter contract with Legacy Academy Charter, Inc., and, two, upon the execution of the first amended charter contract by Legacy Academy Charter, Inc., as well as verification of completion of verbal agreements, authorize the superintendent to withdraw the 90-day termination notice issued on April 18, 2018, which will trigger the school to submit to the Division of Administrative Hearings for Case Number 18-2778, a notice of withdrawal of its request for hearing.
Second.
Thank you, sir.
Amended motion, I will not read the entire thing, by Ms. Belford unless Ms. Enval, do you think we need to read it back into the record?
I think she did a very good job.
Excellent. Do you have all the language there?
I will get it when I watch the video again, yes.
You'll work with Ms. Escobar to make sure that that language...
And Pam and I will both get it.
And I have a second by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion? Only discussion I'll have is Dr. Mullins. Do you have enough direction from that amended motion to what the board is expecting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then without, can we vote electronic? Okay. So we'll vote on the amended motion. I'll call that, call that now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes 5-0.
Move to original motion.
Now we're back to the original motion, which was the action item. Is there any more discussion on this item? Hearing none, please vote, and you can do that electronically. And remember, your vote now is opposite of what you might think it would be, because if you vote yes, then you're going against what you just voted yes on a couple minutes ago. So just to remember.
Explain that. We have an amended motion. If we had amended motion, now we're voting on the entire motion with the amendment. If we vote no, this is a dead issue. To approve what we just approved...
The amended motion, though, included the original motion, because she read the entire thing into it.
Well, we had a motion on the table with a second.
Right.
And there's an amended motion and a second.
Ms. Enval?
So now the amended motion is that it was...
I'm not saying it's right, I just want to make sure that we have the right understanding.
You amended the first motion.
Correct.
To include the additional language. Right, or, so now you have to approve the...
The whole thing.
You approve the amendment...
To the...
The amendment to the actual agenda item. Now you need to approve that agenda item.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it's like amending a bill.
I understand that. The difference was is that Ms. Belford actually read the entire agreement, original, into the record as part of the motion instead of just amending a piece of it. That was what confused me. Does that make sense?
So it's considered a strike-all amendment, and it's the same as amending...
Correct.
An original amending bill. So we now have to approve the original bill as a strike-all amendment.
So then I will withdraw my comments and ask you to vote electronically.
I already voted and I need to change my vote.
Maybe we need to take a verbal vote.
All right. We will take a verbal vote then. Pam, please excuse the electronic. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes 5-0.
The next item is G 32, purchasing solicitations on department-school-initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
I'd like to approve without item A, which I'd like to approve separately.
So are you...
Making a motion?
Motion to, it's kind of like consent, I'm pulling ITB 18B 093DR from the first motion and moving to accept the rest.
Ms. Enval, assist me here to make sure that we do this correctly, because I think we actually have to have a separate...
It's similar to what you just did.
Correct.
Right? So you will have a motion to amend, I think that'll be the west...
That was what I was asking.
Yes. Motion to amend item 33 to exclude A, attachment A, and then separate, then you would vote on attachment A by itself.
Okay, and here's the difference, is that we have not moved or seconded the original thing.
Right, so you have to do that first.
So this is completely different than the last one.
Well, then you have to have complete argument for, you have complete conversation about that item technically to have the amendment to the, to a full approval. And then you go through the whole, that's very convoluted.
It is.
It's very convoluted. It should be, it should be clean and simple. Technically, every one of these could be a separate...
They could be.
...vote, so it's simpler to do it like consent agenda, because that's kind of what this is. It's a purchasing consent agenda. So it makes more sense to make an approval unless the item pulled, and then we'll go, I'll make a motion to approve the other item.
Right. Or you can, we can just discuss the other...
So then you could do this one of two ways, Mr. Craig.
Or we could have discussed the other item, you're correct.
You could do, you could also, you could either, we could either make a motion or you could pull it.
I did not hear a second from what Mr. Ziegler's motion. Okay. Moved by Mr. Ziegler to amend by pulling A as a separate item, and that would leave the other, that would leave us into two different voting blocks, actually. Seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion passes. Now...
Now, I make a motion to approve ITB 18B 093DR for award of bid to AUE staffing for purposes of employee leasing for, for first-year retirees, for substitutes, which is what that item is.
Second for discussion.
All that moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Belford. Item A, and seconded by Ms. Belford. Any discussion, Mr. Ziegler?
Okay. Having asked a lot of questions, pulled a lot of contracts, done a lot of reading, I'm going to have an amendment to that item, but I'm just curious if anybody, I couldn't figure out why we went out to bid on this particular item, and unless there's a business case for it, I'm going to make an amendment. And I don't know if there's a valid, if there's a reason that we went out to bid for this item. The reason I ask that question is because pulling the existing continuing contracts for the other vendors, I'll give you just a minute to find it. I found some contract language that basically states a couple things, one of which is that a continuing contract vendor can at any time add to their continuing contract by request. So in other words, that means is if that vendor has, say, we've contracted for products, and there's a new product in their product line that they want to offer us, they can then say, hey, we're going to offer you this other product, we'd like to amend the contract so you could purchase it if you'd like to. Completely acceptable. So any of these continuing contract vendors can come back and add an additional category per their contract. Additionally, we can also request an additional item within their continuing contract based on, as long as it's within the scope of their services or product set. That's also in the existing contract. Also, I would like to, I'm kind of confused, but I'd like to compliment HR for actually negotiating with one of our continuing contract vendors prior to going out on bid. I don't know why they didn't negotiate with all the continuing contract vendors, but that's neither here nor there at this case, but I do believe that was the right process to follow, was negotiating despite discussion here at a previous meeting. Unfortunately, with Mrs. Enval saying that we couldn't do that, we absolutely can negotiate on a continuing contract vendor. Now, what I'd like to amend the motion is, is since that vendors, continuing contract vendors can come back and add this item to their contract by their own request, I would like to amend this motion to include all continuing contract vendors who bid, because all this is a modification to their existing contracts. And to clarify, there's only one other bidder who's a continuing contract vendor. We also, by our contract, by, by the continuing contract and our purchasing rules and regs, we can, we do not have to award to lowest bidder, but I'm not asking to change that, and we can award to multiple. And since we're talking about an item that is a continuing contract vendor service, rather than having the vendor have to come back to us and say, we'd like to add this to our services, which they perfectly can, I would like to make a motion to add all continuing contract vendors who have bid to this award.
On this, sorry, Mr. Craig, may I?
Need a second to move forward on discussion.
You said all, so that would be everything in purchasing, not just to this item. You've said all.
All that have bid on this item.
So this item.
That are continuing contract vendors.
Okay, because that wasn't what you said. You said all.
So thank you for clarifying.
I thought you meant all.
I know, that's...
No, 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 just, on this item, any continuing contract vendor that has bid.
So we have an amended, I'm sorry, do we have a second for that?
One second for discussion.
Second by Ms. Belford. Discussion on that.
Well, my point is they come back and add to it. So we might as well just include them right now and just make it, make it easy.
Can we hear from Dr. Tolkz? I'm kind of curious on, you asked why we went out to bid, I just want to hear. I'm guessing we went out to bid to see who had the best options and price. I don't understand actually where you're going.
I'm not clear where we, why we went out to bid either, because it could have been, because it could have been negotiated, but I'm just trying to save legwork down the road.
I mean, it could have been negotiated. It would, it could have been negotiated if she wanted to stay with the same one, but if you want to send things out to bid, if you want to see what other people have to offer, what their prices are, yeah.
Dr. Mullins, do you have anything, or is it, all right, if Dr. Tolkz addresses this?
I think Dr. Tolkz is prepared to respond to the question.
Sure. The question is, why did we take it out to bid? I was requested to ask, or I was requested to meet with Sphurion, which I did. When I met with Sphurion, I told them that everything that they provided me would need to be reviewed by our purchasing department and legal. When I received recommendations on how we should move forward in the spirit of transparency of the process to increase competition, so that the bidders would actually establish the market price, so that that was not put on the responsibility of the district or HR. We put it out to bid, I got 10 proposals, and we took the one who had the lowest bid.
When, and I apologize for not knowing the date, but when is it that we went out for bid?
It went out to bid, I want to say sometime...
July 9.
July 9.
That's correct.
Because the three-year contract for the last company that we had finished on February 10th, 2018, right?
No, started.
No, the bid contract, invitation to bid, original one is from 2018. It carries a three-year contract.
Original, I thought you said finished, correct.
So did we extend that bid from February 10th after the three-year date to get to the July 9th date? How were we using them between the time that was February of this year?
How are we using who?
Continuing contract vendors were renewed, I believe, in December.
So they were brought on to con...
Who is they?
So who were we using prior, Sphurion?
We have not used Sphurion for, we have never, ever bid for this scope of work.
For teachers.
None of the...
Substitute teachers, but we were using Sphurion for all of the other, for, what is it, all of the other workers?
Food services?
Food services and all the rest of them, right?
Nothing on the instructional side of the house.
Right. So your argument is, is that you want to continue this original contract and then amend it, is what you're saying, due to them being continued contracts? Is that what this is?
Correct. And there were five continuing contract vendors awarded on that initial bid. I don't know if we still use them all or not, because I had asked for the individual contracts and didn't, didn't get them. However, only two of the five have bid. And so what I'm telling you is, according to our contract, they can come modify their existing contract.
Yes.
So if we don't award this to one of them, they have every right to come back and say, we're going to modify this and you can, you can do this. So I'm just saying, let's just award it...
Yes.
...since they bid. It's just a fair thing to do for the vendors.
So...
And it's up to staff to decide who they utilize when they use the services.
On page 23, 2.33, the school board can change any and modify this according to the contract. On page 13, there's new options on 1.04 that they, that the actual company can, so the option's there.
Correct.
So the option's there for our staffing agencies that we used originally for all the other people. And what I was just going to ask you is, is the decision to go out onto bid on July 9th, at that time, Sphurion was still, and we are still using them for all the other services besides this, is that correct?
Not all the other services. Actually, AUE staffing does services for us, too.
Okay, right, okay, but they're still running, so there's two other organizations that are still running on all of the other staffing pieces, and then we are adding Kelly Services to, who is...
No.
No.
B&amp;B, the only other one is B&amp;B Business Solutions.
Okay, so B&amp;B Business Solutions is now added to do the substitutes. Is that kind of where we're at?
Correct, because, correct.
Okay.
Because they, they bid.
Can, Ms. Belford, excuse...
Can I just clarify really quickly for our public that this is only for...
Substitutes.
Well, it's only for our retired teachers...
Correct.
...to allow them to come back and work as a substitute within that first 12 months after retirement.
Yes, or less.
We are not transitioning all of our substitutes over to this staffing company.
Absolutely.
Correct, correct, thank you for that.
Yes.
Ms. Deskovich?
So I need clarification. You, we are recommending one that came out, went out to bid, they selected one, you want to add another one, you want us to award to two? Is that the short answer?
Well, it's going to be two. Yes, it might have been more if other continuing contract vendors had bid, but they hadn't bid. So I'm just saying, add continuing contract vendors. We've already got existing contracts. It's just going to make it easier just to be fair and add them all.
Dr. Tolkz, do you have an issue with having two to choose from? Is there downsides to that?
I followed the purchasing rules, and the rules with an ITB, and the whole purpose of an ITB is if you understand the scope of what you're asking for, which we did, because it was a very narrow scope that Ms. Belford just described, that you put it out for bid to get the lowest cost. Since we didn't know what market price was, we put it out for bid. Everybody who was a current vendor or is a current vendor had the opportunity to bid. I received 10 bids. Two of them were current vendors. One of them bid lower than the other, and they were the one that received the bid. And according to purchasing, with regard to an ITB, you take the lowest bid. That was the only option I was given.
Thank you, Dr. Tolkz.
Thank you.
One more question?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
So, Ms. Enval, do we have the authority, if we wanted to, to have, to override the current process and award it to two?
You can. So the original solicitation was issued in 2015, and it contained categories of job descriptions to include food service, kitchen worker, cook, baker, cashier, custodial worker, clerical worker, maintenance helper, mechanical technician helper, warehouse worker, temporary cafeteria manager, intern, personnel records clerk, teacher assistant, special assistant, accounting clerk, and group leader for school-age childcare. There was no mention of substitute teachers in the original solicitation. So I looked at it with, with purchasing, and there is a, there is a provision in the contract that we can go ahead and add that, but the provision, if we want to add it, says that we have to choose what that market rate is, and we have to establish that rate. And so in talking with HR and with purchasing, since the substitute teachers were not included in the original solicitation, and it, because it was a three-year contract, they didn't really have a basis upon which they could establish that substitute teacher rate. So the ITB was chosen as the option for transparency because it was never solicited. We also did not, I don't know that, I don't know that any conversations were held with our original, besides Sphurion, I don't know if any other conversations were held with our existing vendors as to whether or not they could provide substitute services. So I don't know if that was...
They were not. I was only requested to meet with Sphurion to see if they actually provided this as a service. And when I met with them, they did. And that's when I sent the information to purchasing and to your office.
So does that help? We can, we can certainly add it, but we would have to establish the rate at which we wanted to add it, and we would have to open it up to the other existing continuing contract vendors.
I just don't under, I guess I'm still confused, Mr. Ziegler, on why, if they cost more, why would we, are they, they give better services? Like, why would you want to go?
First of all, it's 0.13%, but if you look at the existing continuing contract vendors, there's a disparity in those also, and they were all awarded so that we have multiple to choose from. So this is consistent with the continuing contracts that they're on, and the disparity between those two of 0.13%, 22%, I'm sorry, 0.17, 22% and 21.83 is trivial compared to the disparity amongst other categories between the different vendors that we use. So it's, it's mute, and again, they can come back and offer to add it at that rate.
Are we...
So it's, it's, it's mute, and again, they can come back and offer to add it at that rate, based on the terms of the contract.
Are we required to give both business, or just give HR options?
I, I believe it's probably a matter of who staff chooses to use, or who, who has a candidate to bring to the table when somebody's needed. So-
So you want us to have-
We're not directing any business, we're just, I'm just offering to be fair to continuing contract vendors.
Mr. Susan?
Well, this create a issue with billing, if we are billing two separate companies? So if the event that we passed and said we are going to add another, does this create a issue with our billing to where we have some schools that are using one staffing agency, another school using another?
Yes, I would imagine that would cause some-
Okay.
How's that a yes when we do that already with multiple vendors? We're already doing that. And I'm, now I'm confused, why do we have multiple vendors if it's a billing nightmare?
Next question, real quick while she's walking up. Five years is what this, this bid is, and we went to three years on the other one. Just being somebody who's competitive, that likes the billing, we usually have about a three-year cycle that we normally do a lot of our competitive bidding on. Five years seems a little much, was there a reason for that?
I can answer that. Actually, we're open every year to decide whether we want to renew or not. So every year.
Right, I think that's every, every bid that we do. And then the 1.6 million is the cap that we cannot exceed, but that doesn't mean we have to give them the 1.6.
Exactly. No, it's all based on the, whether a school chooses to use a substitute from this pool.
Got you.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
Sorry, Pam.
Ms. Eskivich, sorry, Ms. Eskivich, anything else?
Uh, just, Dr. Mullins, do you have an opinion? I mean, you gave the recommendation, but now there's new, I'm sorry.
Let me just make my comment, then I'll ask Ms. Belford. My comment would be, I, I understand what Mr. Ziegler's saying, finally, but I would have to say that in this case, I agree with the, with the entire, going through the entire process, this is something we hadn't done before. We didn't have a, a bellwether, we didn't have anything stuck in the ground that said, this is what we've done before, and, and I, I don't see the, the reason to change this, if the companies can come back and go, hey, we'll meet that same rate and, you know, add it on to their thing, that's fine. But the, the ITB did what it was supposed to do. It established the market rate for us in Brevard, not in Osceola, not in Volusia, not in Indian River, here in Brevard. It did that because we didn't know what it was. And so I think that was the absolute right thing to do. And I would, I, I think we just take it the way it is, and if the companies that, that we never did in this business with before want to meet that rate, then so be it.
That, that's, that's not, businesses we've never done with before cannot engage in a continuing contract.
No, 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 you're, you're, you're asking to add the companies that we already do business with. This B&amp;B, that, that is Sphurion.
Continuing contract vendors, correct.
Right. But they, they can come back and meet the same rate. So I don't, I don't think this board has done anything but do the, you know, I don't think staffed anything, but do the right thing transparently to set the rate.
I wasn't arguing that, I was just saying, let's add the other continuing contract vendors.
If they want to meet it, if they want to, if they want to do it, then they can come to us. I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not in the business of giving-
They did come to us, they bid.
Can I, can I say something?
They, they have a venue to do it.
So here's, here's where I was trying to get at with all of my questions, is, is that we knew we had, we had these other individuals that were doing, these other two businesses that were doing staffing for the variety of different job positions that we have, right? We knew over January, February, March, that we had an issue with the substitutes and this transition time of them needing to go to a staffing so that they, or retiring teachers so that they can come back, right? I just don't know why we just said, okay, all the rest of you guys that are going out here, why we didn't just competitively bid one big piece, so that we only have one group that we send all of our staffing to? Because we're, we're, we're basically creating, so basically we have these other two that are still going with all of our other pieces, with all of our other, you know, custodial, cafeteria, all of that. Then we took this other one, we added another company to those two, so now we actually have three, but they're on two separate pieces. It would have made sense that all staffing pieces were sent out to bid at the same time, because this was finished in February of 2018. Why we just didn't go out to bid for the whole kit and caboodle, make it real easy, go to one person, and, you know what I mean? That's, that's where I'm seeing this, that's where my piece was, that, that was all. Did we make a cognitive decision to go with these guys for continuing contract? And then we went out to bid for this one, is that what happened?
I, I don't, I don't know. But I could tell you, on, on large purchases from continuing contract vendors, especially this in facilities world, they do have the continuing contract vendors bid on specific projects. So that's not uncommon to ask your continuing contract vendors only to bid. But it's neither here nor there. I'm just saying, let's just be fair at this point in time, that's all I'm asking.
Dr. Mullins?
Staff was directed to go out and, and do a process, they sought the appropriate counsel with the departments and so on, and followed through with the process, and the recommendation is brought forward appropriately.
Okay. So, Ms. Enval, or Mrs. Escobar, can you please refresh us on where we are with which amendment that is being discussed and needs to be voted on?
The amendment is from Mr. Ziegler to include the continuing contract vendors.
That have bid.
On this specific item?
On, on Attachment A.
Okay, so the, as stated by Ms. Escobar, that amendment is ready for, to call. Is there any other discussion before I call that question? Hearing none, I call the question, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Aye. Motion fails to three. What is the next?
The original motion.
Shouldn't you have to vote on it and its-
On A itself?
We did.
Right.
So now we vote on the approval of item-
Of Attachment A as-
Attachment A, which is ITB 18 dot, or dash B dash 093 dash D R, D R, Temporary Services for Substitute Teachers. Is there any more discussion on that?
No, there is.
We already have a motion?
I made a motion to approve it.
That was to pull it out. Yes, ma'am?
I have just a clarification question for Ms. Enval. I'm sorry, this seems to have gotten incredibly convoluted. And I, I don't, I don't think we have anyone from purchasing that can weigh in it from an area of expertise. So my question is, just for clarification, as Mr. Ziegler indicated, we are about to approve the AUE staffing, but as our continuing contract indicates, once this is approved, then Sphurion can approach staff and add that element to their contract, correct?
Yes, yes.
And they can then add it at the rate that is in this ITB, as opposed to the rate that they submitted?
You're right, at the rate that they, that they, they want to propose, they could even, I guess, come undercut them.
I believe they submitted a response to this ITB.
They did, but it's a higher rate. So if we were to approve this, it would be at the higher rate, but they can then come in and, and, I'm on the right track there?
I agree with you, yeah, I agree.
That's why I was saying, if we would have done them all at once, we wouldn't have this jockeying back and forth between the two, that was all.
Let's do it.
Okay.
All right. Only one, none on mute. Again, a voice vote, so this is to call the question for the approval of item so stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion passes 5-0.
John, can I say something real quick?
Yes, Mr. Susan?
I just wanted to say thank you to staff for bringing this forward, because it is one of our critical shortages that we had. You guys did respond with it, and you did a great job as far as bringing back that gap. Not many people know why we're going around in circles with this, but we have a huge amount, we have a need for our, our substitutes that are, and we have a pool of teachers that are retiring, and because they're in drop, they can't come back unless they go to a, a service. So this is great, and I just wanted to say thank you. He keeps turning me off, because I keep talking.
Always goes off, please.
Thank you.
I would second that, thank you very much, Dr. Tulks, and your entire staff in purchasing as well. Ms. Zierker, I know you're involved, so thank you. The next is to approve the rest, that is item B through M, I believe, as pulled apart by Mr. Ziegler.
No, no, we did, we did that.
I think you did that already.
Oh, we did that first one. That was first, that's right, okay. So we're all good there, Pam?
Yes.
All right. Dr. Mullins?
The next five are policy revisions sponsored by Student Services.
I didn't put it, it's this one, G 33.
Let me see if I can do this. Next is item G 33, Department School Initiated Agreements. Which is the TNTP Contract College Board and Lifetime Counseling Center.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Susan, is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0, Dr. Mullins?
Can I just say something quick? I just want to acknowledge that we're, we just approved the SAT over the ACT, which I think is, that, you know, that move is, was an excellent move. It saved us money, it was proposed by Dr. Sullivan, and I'm glad to see us moving in that, that direction.
Yes, and thank you for all the work you did, Dr. Sullivan, to do that research too, thank you. Dr. Mullins?
All right, now, the next five are policy revisions sponsored by Student Services. The revision schedule took place as follows. Cabinet met on June 25th, 2018. The Rural Development Workshop was held on August 14th, 2018, at which the public had its first opportunity to provide input. Tonight, September 11th, 2018, is the school board meeting during which the second public hearing is held. Please note that all proposed revisions encompass the suggest language from NEOLA. First is School Board Policy 5112, Entrance Requirement. This policy is being revised to clarify the procedures regarding entrance requirements, technical changes, and other changes in compliance with applicable Florida law. Particular areas of revision include the following. Exceptional student education for students age, ages birth to five years, health examination and immunization requirements.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, is there anyone here who has come to speak on the proposed revisions to School Board Policy 5112, Entrance Requirements? Hearing none, at this time I will entertain a motion to approve the revisions to School Board Policy 5112, Entrance Requirements.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Belford, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0, Dr. Mullins?
Next is- Next is School Board Policy 5200, Attendance. This policy is being revised to meet new statutory requirements for districts to adopt attendance policies authorizing a student's absence from school for treatment of autism spectrum disorder. Particular areas of revision include the provision that appointments for a therapy services provided by a licensed healthcare practitioner or certified behavior analyst are considered excused absences with the provision of proper documentation. Parents must request and be granted approval prior to the treatment.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, is there anyone here who has come to speak on the proposed revisions to School Board Policy 5200, Attendance? Seeing none, at this time I will entertain a motion to approve the revisions to School Board Policy 5200, Attendance.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Eskivich, is there any discussion? The only discussion I'll have is, Dr. Thede, thank you for all the work you put in, and your team put into this, because this is a, a huge revision to a policy, and I, I know you worked really, really hard to get the right language, so thank you. And to you, Ms. Enval, as well. No other discussion, please vote. Motion passes 5-0, Dr. Mullins?
We are now at School Board Policy 5320, Immunizations. This policy is being revised to clarify the procedures regarding, regarding health examinations and immunization requirements. Particular areas of revision include the following. Expanded definitions of health examination and immunization requirements, including provisions where policy does not apply. Personnel responsibilities for ensuring compliance, and exclusion from school for students not in compliance during the presence of any communicable disease for which immunization is required by the Department of Health.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, is there anyone here who has come to speak on the proposed revisions to School Board Policy 5320, Immunizations? Seeing none, at this time I will entertain a motion to approve the revisions to School Board Policy 5320, Immunizations.
Second.
By Ms. Belford, seconded by Ms. Eskivich, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0, Dr. Mullins?
We are now at School Board Policy 5350, Student Suicide. This policy is being revised to clarify procedures for ensuring all staff have access to suicide prevention resources through professional development. Particular areas of revision include the following. In-service requirements for schools to become a suicide prevention certified school.
Thank you, is there anyone here who has come to speak on the proposed revisions to School Board Policy 5350, Student Suicide? Seeing none, at this time I will entertain a motion to approve the revisions to School Board Policy 5350, Student Suicide.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Eskivich, seconded by Mr. Susan, is there any discussion? Ms. Belford?
Need to offer a technical amendment on this particular policy, very minor, but something that came up this afternoon. Under Youth Suicide Awareness and Prevention, it is a strike-through on the two-hour, so it should read A Continuing Education Program, as opposed to a two-hour continuing education program, giving some leniency there for expanding or addressing differently. And then in the next paragraph, third line, should read participates in two and one-half, 2.5 hours of youth suicide awareness, as opposed to two. And I'll bring you this, Pam, so you can see it. But just, motion to amend the policy as stated.
Motion by Ms. Belford to approve, or adjust the policy as stated, as a strike-through replace, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Eskivich, is there any discussion? Hearing none.
Do we need to have public comment on the new?
Yes, public comment, I'm sorry, thank you, we do need to have public, is there anyone who would like to speak on the proposed revisions as amended to School Board Policy 5350, Student Suicide? Hearing none, I will call the question, as a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
We are now at School Board Policy 9270, Equivalent Education Outside the School, or Home Education. This policy is being revised to clarify the policy regarding home education to meet the requirements of House Bill 731, and to clarify other changes in compliance with applicable Florida law. Particular areas of revision include the following. Defines that no additional documentation may be required of the student enrolling a child in home education beyond the notice of intent to establish and maintain a home education program, unless the student chooses to participate in school, district program, or service. Clarifies participation in certain activities, and clarifies enrollment in full FAB IEP services.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, is there anyone here who has come to speak on the proposed revisions to School Board Policy 9270, Equivalent Education Outside the Home, Home Education? Seeing none, at this time I will entertain a motion to approve the provisions to School Board Policy 9270, Equivalent Education Outside the Home, Home Education.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Belford, seconded by Mr. Susan, is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0, Dr. Mullins?
That concludes policy revisions, our next action item is G 39. On Charter School Governing Board's Authorization to Choose Method of Compliance under Section 1006.12 Florida Statutes. Safe, school, excuse me, school safe officers at each public school.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Eskivich, seconded by, I believe, Mr. Moved by Ms. Deskovich, seconded by, I believe, Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion?
I, I just, I do find this a bit odd since our governance over charter school is primarily accountability for performance and solvency. We don't have any operational governance. Yes, this is, has to be cleared by us. I'm assuming purely that if they chose a, choose a specific method, we have to okay release of funds from the state to fund that method. Other than that, we have no governance, no say-so in their operations. I just wanted to clarify that for the public. We're just clarifying release of funds for their choice.
That was my understanding as well. Ms. Enval agrees. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes five zero. Dr. Mullins?
Item G forty is the inter-local agreement, City of Palm Bay, Minor Civil Projects.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Susan. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes five zero. We will now move on. Do we, does anybody need a break?
No.
Good. We'll now move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review, and will be brought back for out, action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight. Dr. Mullins?
There are three items under the information category, all concerning policy revisions.
Does any member wish to discuss an item? Hearing none. We'll move on to board member reports and discussion points. We have one discussion point this evening. Mr. Susan has asked to discuss capacity growth. Mr. Susan?
Sure. It, this shouldn't take long. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to do it. We all know Viera is growing. We all know that the issues that we're dealing with here are no different than Titusville years ago, Palm Bay years ago. And what we're ending up is, is that currently Manatee is at the cusp of a hundred percent capacity. Suntree is closed down and they are close to a hundred percent capacity. Quest is over a hundred percent capacity, as we know, to where they're converting classrooms that are normally computer labs and other rooms into classrooms. So there needs to be something done. So we, we as a, a school board, were under the impression that we would open up a elementary school in two thousand and twenty-one and a middle school in two thousand and twenty-three. That was what staff brought to us. And we were communicating maybe a K through eight and some other options. But there's a couple of things that recently happened in the last two weeks that brought a couple of other issues to the table. The Viera company came in and notified us last week that they are expanding Phase Two of South of Quest with six thousand more homes, which means that within, with, in three years, it doesn't start for three years. So three years from now, Quest will see another, start selling the homes, six thousand of them, on top of what you see when you go down there. So on top of that, Pinecrest, which was supposed to take off about two hundred kids off of Quest, which would have allowed us to skin until about two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, has just pulled out, as we saw that email. So that means that now Pinecrest is out. Viera's company's building faster. So what I was looking for the board to do was to give Dr. Mullins the opportunity to come back with a recommendation sometime in October, hoping, hopefully October ninth meeting, as to what we would do as far as the short-term goals of what are we going to do next year for Quest? Is that cap and busing? Is that more portables? Is that rezoning? And long-term, do we move up? Because we do have the money to build the elementary school in two thousand and twenty, do we do that now? Staff had hesitation.
[applause]
Staff had, staff had hesitation to do that because they are looking to do a really unique district security, like a, a very secure school. The problem is, is that if we do decide to go through the bid of doing a unique district secure school, we can't open that until two thousand and twenty-one. But we do have the specs for one in two thousand and twenty. So on top of that, the other piece is, is that we do know that the capacity will be here for a Viera middle school in two thousand and twenty-two or two thousand and twenty-three. The problem is, is that, and we do know that staff has already decided to move forward in February with start the design builds for a highly secure facility and stuff like that. Where I see that we need to get the staff to give us a recommendation is over a complete comprehensive plan for Viera, not just a one-off, hey, we're going to move these kids this year. Next year, we're going to do a complete comprehensive rezoning for not only middle schools but elementary schools on a three, four, five-year scale so that we can turn around and allow our parents and everybody else to know where they're going to go and what that plan looks like. So that's, wow, I just keep talking. I'm getting some praise here. But the thing is, is that, that's what I would like to do. And I think in talking to the PTOs, all of the PTOs in the area, met with, from all of the elementary schools, met with Sue Han, and Sue said that she appreciated all of their conversation. They're coming back next Tuesday to work with her again. So I think we're in there. And I wanted to answer any questions that you guys had. And if not, I would just like to send that recommendation. I wanted a K through eight, but the capacity needs are going to blow the K through eight out of the water. And we wouldn't be able to build a K through eight until two thousand and twenty-two because of the thirty-five million dollar tag as opposed to the twenty-two million dollar tag for an elementary school. And so staff's recommendations to move forward with an elementary school first and then a middle school makes sense. Plus, we might be able to, if we see huge growth, possibly in two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, look at that sixth grade option being in the middle school if there's an overcapacity at our elementary schools. And we would have that infrastructure in place for a large middle school. So that's kind of where we were. Been in the thick of it for a while, but that's the thirty-thousand-foot view. These are the experts. So that's what I wanted to do, is see if you guys would, would agree to give them recommendation to move forward with a recommendation, knowing that our five-year capacity plan is due in October. So we're trying to get a race to do that. And I talked to Dr. Mullins and he thought that was the best case. Right?
Okay. Well, let me, let me clarify. We, we did, we did receive new information late yesterday afternoon that Pinecrest is intending, or I should say Academia, Academica, the management company, to submit a letter to defer their opening to two thousand and twenty-one. When we brought the capacity planning to the board months, a few months ago now, and it included consideration or the fact that we thought Pinecrest would be opening in nineteen-twenty. So it certainly presents, yeah.
Next year.
Presents, yeah.
Or twenty-twenty.
Nineteen-twenty.
What did I say?
Well, is it school nineteen?
Nineteen-twenty, yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
Or, or nineteen-twenty. Two thousand. We thought they were going to open in, for nineteen-twenty.
There you go.
They're now deferring to two thousand and twenty-one. So we do need to reevaluate the recommendation or the, the capacity planning plan, so.
I would agree. Anybody else have any comment?
I'm assuming that a comprehensive analysis for Viera is going to include the logic of looking at a six, seven, eight middle school, since that will cost a lot less than building two schools. I know the Viera community has been asking for that. It would also, if you, because, and I, the K through eight's an intriguing idea, but it won't solve the problem without changing a lot of attendance boundaries. If, I, and also adding an elementary school is going to change a lot of attendance boundaries, which means is, once that school opens, doesn't mean that people whose boundaries change will go to the new school. They may just go to another existing school. Whereas the six, seven, eight model, you take all the sixth grades from all those schools, put them in that middle school, no attendance boundaries change. Viera gets everything they want in one fell swoop. We save money. We don't have two administrations. We cut on bus routes. So as, comprehensive analysis, as long as it looks at that entire scope, that's the right thing to do as soon as possible.
We certainly would look at all options. I, the timing is the challenge. To do a comprehensive evaluation of all options will require more time, but we'll do the best we can.
Excellent job, Mr. Susan.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for, for that. The one thing you did mention is, is that there's an existing building right now with the cafeteria and an auditorium and.
Very interesting you bring that up. Should that be part of Dr. Mullins's recommendations, turning SF into an elementary school?
We'll look at all options.
Thank you.
I thought that was already analyzed.
Thank you. Ms. Belford?
Are we, were you asking for additional discussion points or board member reports? Are we still on Viera?
Whichever you would like, Ms. Belford.
I just have one quick request, and I'm going to apologize because I wasn't able, it'll be quicker than that, Dr. Mullins. I wasn't able to follow up with you. But I had sent a request to Dr. Mullins asking for consideration of extending our employee discount for aftercare, before and aftercare, to our school resource officers that are serving in our schools. And initial evaluation from Ms. Archer indicated that we could not do it because our employees, it's considered imputed income for our employees. So it actually is included in their income figures for the year. And obviously, we can't do that with someone who is not on staff. I spoke with Ms. Enval and she is under, of the opinion that we can extend the equivalent of the employee discount to our SROs. And the reason this is important is because we have, for example, if we have an SRO who has a child in our elementary, but they are posted at our secondary schools, then obviously it's difficult for them to get there, to pick up their children in the afternoon and so there. So my, my request, because I don't want to be hasty and, and throw us into something that may have repercussions we are not considering, my request, Dr. Mullins, is if you could please explore that opportunity. And if there are other contracted folks that we may want to include in that as well, like our nurses perhaps, would, would just like to have an opportunity to evaluate that and see if we could make that happen for SROs who are wonderful community servants and certainly doing a wonderful job in our schools.
Can I pigtail on that?
Yes. So there is also a discrepancy that was cut up, and I would like to try to get clarification, that if you are a teacher that is at a school and you use the aftercare there, you have one price. But if you teach at a school that is not the aftercare that you're using and it's in a different location, you pay a different price. And where that comes into, well, I pulled the documents, let's just make sure. But there's some teachers that are forced to move from one place to another due to movement and they are forced to pay a little bit more. So let's just make sure that those two make the same and we should be good.
I'll follow up and clarify with staff and bring it back to the board.
Maybe part of Dr. Theddy's fees. Look at, maybe, I don't know. All right. Is there anything else on board member discussion? Dr. Mullins, do you have anything to add?
Seven-thirty, I said we finished. Not at this time, thank you.
You sure?
[inaudible].
All right. There being no further business, the meeting is now adjourned.